Then did you have to sign up? All right, thank you very much. Yeah, we have the public hearing. Good evening, everyone. At this time, we will call the regular September 2019 meeting to order. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There will now be a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we will approve the agenda. We have one addition. If you will please notice down in the agenda item number nine will be consolidated with item 10. Then we, item will move accordingly. No other amendments to the agenda unless we have any. The chair will move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The agenda is approved as amended. You have submitted, you got it both electronically and in your books, the minutes for the August 13th special meeting and regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as submitted?
Mr. Chair, having previously reviewed the minutes prior to the meeting, I move that both sets of minutes be approved as submitted.
Have a motion to approve? We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The minutes are approved as submitted. We now have public comment and we have one individual, Ms. Cindy Harmon. And if you would get a microphone, I've got there.
Yeah, I saw a hold.
Yes, and you'll need to keep it fairly close, otherwise it won't go. That's good, that's good. And Forrest will be our timekeeper.
Okay, when are you ready?
When you are.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. As a taxpayer of Madison County, I have some issues tonight with regard to an asphalt plan hearing that took place in June. I also have concerns of the appointments to your Economic Development Board and your Board of Adjustment boards. Also, actions by your county attorney with regard to your timeliness of his duties. The hearing that took place in June for a conditional use permit was supposed to be run as a quasi judicial hearing. It was everything but that. According to documented transcripts, two members of this board had to be recused before the hearing began. Another member of this board should have been recused because she works for the county and she has made numerous disparaging comments throughout the county about the applicants. Also, many members of the Economic Development Board were allowed to attack the applicants in this hearing and throughout the county. The Board of Adjustment denied the permit and after 80 days, the county attorney has still not presented a simple letter of denial to the Reed family. But the biggest farce is the introduction of a group called Sustainable Madison and Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League that is based in Glendale, North Carolina. So who is Sustainable Madison? Back in March, Sustainable Madison solicited money and during the solicitation on social media, they identified themselves as a bona fide, their words not mine, nonprofit with 501(c)(3) status. They do not hold a 501(c)(3) status at the IRS. The IRS has never heard of Sustainable Madison and Sustainable Madison at this time is still not registered with the North Carolina Secretary of State's office, nor do they hold a license for charitable solicitation in North Carolina. Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League's license for charitable solicitation is in an expired status and denied renewal application. The Reeds are a fine family. Their family ties to Madison go back almost 250 years. They have operated many wonderful businesses in this county for many years. Does this county not owe this family at least the right to due process without harassment by county employees and county board members? This group Sustainable Madison, according to state and federal records, are defrauding the taxpayers of this county to push a subversive agenda solely aimed at undermining legitimate business development in Madison County. These socialist ideologues that have been placed on your boards in this county do not reflect the mindset of Madison County. This county in 2016 voted 61.4% for Donald J. Trump, which is a reflection of where this county's citizens want the economic direction to go. Gentlemen, you can't push a chain, you have to pick a side and pull. And the people of this county will not tolerate their county being pushed into a leftist socialist direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. There are no other individuals for public comment. That section of the meeting, we will now move to the public hearing for the Madison County Transportation Authority grant funding. We will call that public hearing to order. We have no one signed up for public comment. So the public comment period will be closed. All right. Forrest?
Dee, hi Miller.
Come in Dee. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello?
Good evening, my name is Dee Hi-Muller. I'm the Director of Madison County Community Services and I'm here to speak about the public transportation, there's two grants. I took a shower. What'd you say? This is about the transportation. We have two grants that we will be applying for this year. They need your approval. The two grants on the table right now are administrative grant under 5311 monies. I'm hoping that you've received your cheat sheet on this.
Correct.
The 5311 administrative grant is applied through NCDOT, PTD, which is Public Transportation Department. The amount is predetermined by the state for each county and is based on population and average of trips that Madison County Transportation posts each year and the amount given to the PTD for this grant by the North Carolina Legislature and federal government. The monies are used to support a percentage of the administrative staff of MCTA, a percentage of fringe benefits for those staff members and a few operational items. At this time, we have been allowed to apply for $127,628 for fiscal year 2021. The breakdown is that the federal government pays 80% at 102, 102. The North Carolina Department of Transportation pays 5%, which is 6,381. And locally, Madison pays 15% at $19,145. So my request at this time is if you have any discussion or questions, I'd be happy to answer them and I would need your approval for this to accept the grant as I apply for it.
All right. Gentlemen, are there any questions or discussion?
It was very clear. Just, just for the record, Mr. Chair, the public comment needs to come after her presentation. I don't, I think we have any though, correct?
We do not.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Having no, having no public comment, Mr. Counselor, would it be appropriate to go to the vote?
It would.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the grant $127,628 for, known as 5311? We have a motion? Do we have a second? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dee.
The next one is the 5311 capital grant and the capital grant pays for vehicles and other things that the department may need that are tangibles. So we again apply for this grant through NCDOT, Public Transportation Department. It's a competitive grant in which MCTA applies for replacement items. For 2021 grant application, we are asking for two new replacement vehicles and a portable generator. Now, the caveat in this is that we are still awaiting conversation with the state of North Carolina as to whether the two vehicles we currently have in our fleet of 11 will be eligible in 2021. They have to hit 100,000 miles and at the moment, they're close, but we still have a year to go. So we've got to wait for approval on that. And once we get that, we will send in the grant and if they do not, we will bring it back in front of you to know that you wouldn't be agreeing to that amount of money. Okay? And then we're asking for a portable generator. Basically, as you know, we're part of the coordinated plan here in emergency planning and so we're just looking at opportunities to keep ourselves up and running as we look at more hurricanes and all of those other great weather events. The total would be 123,159. The federal government would do, the federal transportation authority would do 80% at 98.527. NCDOT is 10% at 12.317 and the local match from Madison County is also 10% at 12.317. So at this time, if you don't have any discussions or questions, I would ask for a vote of approval.
And all of that, for both of these, when you apply year out, so we wouldn't budget for this till FY '21, we would know at that point.
I've got a question. On the, on the generator. I know we have it listed under shop equipment, but my understanding is the intent of the generator is to keep our facility up and running in the event of a long-term power outage.
That's correct.
Okay. Is the generator that we're looking at big enough to power that office?
I have learned so much about generators in the last two years. So it, so it is the biggest that you can get without putting it in the ground?
Without a permanent generator.
That is correct.
I got you.
So we're at like...
1350...
17...
Oh, 17, nice. 17,000.
That should carry that though.
I got you.
Yeah, that should carry that though.
We did, my sidekick over there, between Kathy Crawford and I, we have checked every generator from here across the country.
They've made them a little bigger since I bought mine there.
They're monsters. And so the answer to that is that it would be able to power the computer system of which we have our scheduling in and some lighting to a degree.
Very good. Thank you, Dee.
You're welcome.
My only question, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions or comments, gentlemen? Do we have a motion to approve the second grant? We have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dee. Sorry, I got a little bit out of order there. Thank you for hurrying me back.
Don't want anybody to dispute us on a technicality.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, Caleb. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey there.
Give you a little background. This, the purpose of this is a hazard mitigation grant application. A little background on the specifics of it. Approximately 2:00 AM on April 20th, 2019, homeowners Jeremy and Markell Kirkendall heard a noise outside the back of their house. So the back deck of the residence had been impacted by a landslide, very significant one. Thankfully, they were able to evacuate their house, go to a neighbor's house, call 911 for help. Then about 15 minutes of them evacuating, the landslide actually impacted the foundation of their house, knocking it off its foundation, can the leper kind of over their basement and into their yard about 15 feet. This residence is in Madison County, it's in Seven Glen in Weaverville. The house is completely totaled, it's beyond any repair. If you were to see pictures of it. This hazard mitigation grant is offered through the state of North Carolina Department of Public Safety. The funding source comes from a combination of federal and state funding that was allocated for Hurricane Florence mitigation. It's 75% federal funded and it's 25% state funded. When it's all said and done, there's no actual Madison County funds that will be required for this. There's a caveat to that. Madison County will provide the initial funds for the purchase of the property, purchase from the owner, as well as the funds required for the demolition and clearance of all the debris and everything on the property. Once that's all done, the state, through the Department of Public Safety, will reimburse Madison for 100% of those funds. Property assessment will be done to appraise the value of the property prior to Hurricane Florence, since that's where these funds originated. And that'll be done in the process. As we have some estimates based on tax value about what, a range of what that will be to just help us plan for this. With your approval, the designation of applicant agent resolution will allow Madison County to pursue this grant on behalf of the homeowners. The homeowners already completed their portion of the grant application. The management and the oversight of the entire project will be handled by Madison County and we're confident that we can handle that with our existing staff. Thank you for your time to consider this.
Thank you for the effort you put into this.
Yes. And thank you Forrest and everyone that's been involved with this. Any further discussion or comment? The chair will move that...
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, for anybody who might be wondering, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Donnie or Forrest, essentially, the property would then be condemned and never, it would be owned by the county per se, but it would be condemned and never be able to be, have anything done with it ever again. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, it's deemed unsuitable.
Correct. I just wanted to...
We're fine.
Put that on the record.
Any other comment?
Sure, thank you.
All right. The chair will continue its motion to approve the hazard mitigation grant application. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And again, very good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Caleb.
Thank you, Caleb.
All right, Mr. Terry. Come on down. Good evening.
Good evening. To the other board commissioners, in an effort to support the recognition of National Manufacturing Week during the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board's August Board of Directors meeting, the Board of Directors approved a resolution recognizing the significance of the region's manufacturers and encourage other local governments to do the same. Currently, Mountain Area Workforce Development's four county region, Madison, Buncombe, Henderson and Transylvania Counties, have approximately 500 small to large sized companies that employ well over 25, 20,000 individuals. To increase the awareness about the boundless opportunities in advance manufacturing within Madison County, the county, the Community and Economic Development Department is requesting that the Madison County Commissioners join with the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board as around counties in recognizing the significance of manufacturers within Madison County. By approving the resolution in support of MFG Day in July, Madison County was recognized by NCLEAD for experiencing the fourth fastest job growth rate in North Carolina for the first quarter of 2019. Madison County was recognized based upon the first quarter's 2019 establishments, employment and wages. A significant, a significant number of positions created were within the manufacturing industry. Madison County is home to several manufacturing firms and the average, average manufacturing wage of citizens employed in the manufacturing sector is $59,248. There are over 760 residents of Madison County who are employed in the manufacturing sector. Plans are being made to host activities for individuals to learn more about Madison County's manufacturing industry during the Manufacturing Week, which is scheduled for September 30th, October through October 4th, 2019. I have the resolution here. I would love to read it into the record because it's a lot of great news about Madison County specifically. Resolution in support of MFG Day by the Madison County Board of Commissioners. Whereas North Carolina is home to the fourth largest manufacturing workforce in the southeast and the ninth largest in the United States employing more than 470,000 workers representing more than 10% of the total workforce. Whereas Madison County is home to several manufacturing firms including Advanced Superabrasives Incorporated, Print Pack Medical and Medicine Manufacturing and the average manufacturing wage in the county is $59,248, which makes manufacturing one of the highest paying sectors in the county. And whereas manufacturing firms in Madison County support educational institutions included, including Madison County Schools, AB Tech, Morris Hill University, as well as nonprofits and charities in the county. And whereas Madison County residents work in the manufacturing sector in adjoining counties, firms like Thermal Fisher Scientific, ABL Technologies, ABB, Altech and many others. And whereas Madison County is part of a region that is home to over 500 manufacturing firms employing over 20,000 individuals with an average wage exceeding $65,405 and total wages exceeding $1.3 billion annually. Whereas the number of manufacturing jobs in the region is 25% above the national average, which comprises of 12% of the total, total employment in the region. Whereas manufacturing firms in the region export over $1.1 billion in goods annually. And whereas manufacturing is one of the leading sectors for job growth in the region, growing at a 6.8% and adding 1,500 jobs in the past year over the 5,000 jobs in the past decade. Whereas manufacturing firms in the region have invested more than $1 billion in capital investment over the past decade. Whereas manufacturing accounts for over 20% of the region's $21 billion economy. And whereas manufacturing firms in the region make a wide range of products including automotive and heavy duty truck components, aviation components, plastics, healthcare devices, printing and related support activities and more. Whereas Madison High School and AB Tech offer state-of-the-art instruction in high-demand careers, serving the workforce needs of manufacturing employers in the region. And whereas public schools, community colleges and universities in the region partner with manufacturing firms to develop the highly skilled talent required for today's manufacturing. And whereas as part of the National Manufacturing Week, the week of September 30th through October 4th and Manufacturing Day, October 4th, 2019, thousands of educators, teachers and workforce partners would visit local manufacturing firms to increase awareness of career opportunities available in this sector. If it is approved, be it resolved by the Madison County Board of Commissioners as follows. Number one, that the Madison County Board of Commissioners strongly support the region's manufacturing sector and is committed to helping manufacturing firms meet their talent needs. Two, that its board pledges to educate and inform the region about the importance of manufacturing sector and the board will support Manufacturing Week and Manufacturing Day. That this resolution, resolution shall be effective upon adoption. And that's the resolution that is approved. I would like to say that one of our advanced manufacturers, and that's Advanced Superabrasives, is already leading the way in helping to get things planned for teachers to actually visit their plant. And with that, I would love to have this resolution approved.
Thank you. Comments, gentlemen? Very good homework, Terry, and thank you for serving with Nathan and the other folks on the Mountain Air Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
To acknowledge Advanced Superabrasives and Print Pack and Madison Manufacturing and thank them for their contribution to county and what they help provide for our residents, I also just want to point out, because I can't, I don't think we can blow our own horns too many times for a county like Madison County, for sure. And that's that Advanced Superabrasives was North Carolina's exporter of the year...
Yes.
For the entire state.
Yes.
This, this past year. So that's right here in Madison County, so.
And it hires our people.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Well, the numbers speak for themselves. In a little while, I'm going to be going into the map book and one of the reasons our numbers look good in here is the very sector that we're talking about here. And this is a result of years of time and effort and investment. It didn't happen last week, last month. And do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Some motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Without further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Terry. Very much. I would respectfully request of our newspaper if it would be possible to print this resolution with its content, Paul, so that the community would have an opportunity to see the detailed information.
Certainly take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir. I know I put you a little bit on the spot, but...
That wasn't a yes, by the way.
But there's a lot of very valuable information in there that a lot of people are not aware of. Mr. Tammy, come on down.
Good evening. Good afternoon, commissioners. I am here tonight to ask for your approval of and answer any questions that you may have related to the 2019-20 school nurse contract. The state provides the majority of the funds for three of the school nurses. You have the contract in front of you. And the school system provides the funds for the additional fourth school nurse. And each year, the state gives us the requirements. That spells out exactly how these funds are spent. It spells, it spells out the requirements that we have to oversee and ensure that the funds are spent the way they're intended to serve the health needs of the students in our school system. So I'm here tonight to answer questions and ask your approval for this.
All right, are there any questions, gentlemen?
It was very well laid out. It was, I totally understand the necessity.
All right, has been properly reviewed, Counselor?
It has.
All right. Without further discussion, the chair will move that we approve the contract for school nurses as presented by our health director.
Mark did.
Do we have a second? All right. No further discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right. You have before you, and I will try to be painfully brief on a very complicated book. This is the 2019 county map book. The volume of these is now limited due to the publishing cost and these are published by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Board that I happen to sit on.
I'm assuming you selected the, the size of the font?
Uh, yes, it helps my bad eyesight.
Very good.
And by the way, Donnie, here's you a copy. There is a copy on file at the county office and you can go to the website. And I would encourage people to go to the website. Paul, I'm doing my best to get you a copy as I did last year. I've asked for some more. This is all Forrest and I could muster when we went to the meeting. And we'll point out a few highlights in here and really encourage people to go to the website and check it out. Now, there are challenges that we have, we know that. And there are also some things in this book that need to be pointed out. And the book is color-coded based on the different areas in the state. And we know that in a state with 100 counties and as incredibly diverse as we are, all counties are certainly not created equal. But if you look for things, for example, from educational attainment to high school graduation rates, to many of those related to education, we not only have improved, we continue to improve. And we continue to be in the upper echelon in the state and that is with limited local funding, even though it's been dramatically increased. Okay? Our average teacher's supplement is virtually nonexistent and yet still, and Forrest and I were sharing this at a meeting where he was at, which was separate, a county to be left nameless to protect the guilty, pays a very handsome teacher's supplement and has a dramatically lower graduation rate. That speaks well for our community, folks. Both for the school system, the families that live in the community and everybody's commitment to finishing school and to the great work that AB Tech and others do and Mars Hill University and others to provide options. Classroom teachers, turning on to page 10. Program enhancement, if you work through. Now, there is one page we need to look at, which is 12. We need to look at that as a group and I will encourage you guys to look at that. This is the estimated public facility needs for schools. And you will notice because we are projected to grow and we are growing, we are in one of those darker green colors for the future. We do receive a low wealth supplement, very few charter schools. Now, let's move down to page 17. Now, let's move down to page 17. This is a challenge. If you will notice, that we are in the color coming in at 31% of our children living in poverty. This is in a county with a climbing economic status. Now, not to pick on the approximate dozen counties that rate as high as 44%. We have counties in North Carolina where almost half of all the children live and identify poverty. And you tell by the color coding. Our unemployment rate is among the very lowest in the state. Consistently, the four counties that make up Greater Asheville, known as the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, have among the very lowest unemployment in the state and have had so for years. And Madison County is fortunately in that group. And as was pointed out in Terry's presentation, our job growth put us in that exclusive company of a top five as a percentage. So the economic upturn here, we are still very much on the very high positive side of what's happening in the state. Food insecurity, page 19. We know we have a lot of people with food insecurity, but these numbers, by the way, are not... These are very carefully developed numbers by the Institute of Government and University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and others. These are not just political numbers. Madison County, according to the latest statistics, is at an unfortunate level of 16%. That is less than half of some counties in the state. It's still a terrible challenge at 16. It goes through things like mental health and uninsured Medicaid eligibility, opiate deaths per capita. In Madison County, according to the last statistics, let me pull us out of these numbers here, and I'm sorry, I should have highlighted that.
Seventeen, Mr. Chair.
Yes. We had 17.
Percent.
Yeah. And this is on a per capita basis, so for Mecklenburg, we'd be on the same formula. We have counties in this state that rate as high as 57. Fifty-seven opiate-related deaths on that same formula. Okay? Medicaid eligibility, several other things, children under DSS, for which we are actually quite small. Now, I want to refer everybody to page 26. And I want you to look to the left column. There are four counties that didn't report, but I have a hard time thinking they're probably going to beat us. Of the 96 counties that reported, Madison County had the lowest violent crime rate in the state of North Carolina, at 33 incidents. There are counties much smaller than we are. Yeah. We have a lot of other numbers in here, just a couple others. The tax rates are in here, and we fall sorta kinda, even with the tax increase, we are not, not, I repeat, as high as the state average. Average income per capita, our average income per capita has continued to climb. We are currently at $32,453. One of the numbers that will appear in next year's study that is not in here now is an analysis of poverty. And I had a little briefing on that, and when we dig into the numbers, and I think many of us know this, our most concentrated group of poverty in Madison County are those over the age of 65. That is our hardcore. It's invisible to a lot of us, but it's the legacy of the death of tobacco. It's the legacy of the last of the tenant farmers and people who are land poor and don't have much income. And that is a huge challenge. While the rest of the county is making enormous income strides, many of our elderly over the age of 65, a very high percentage of them live in poverty, by any way we want to measure it. That's a real challenge to us, folks. Again, broadband internet is much higher than many people would expect. That number does include if you have cellphone access. And a lot of people, it may not be the fastest thing in the world, but that's what we get our internet on. Total taxable property per person, and this is the last one I'm really going to point out. Total taxable property per person. Okay? One of my peers want to pull it out here for me?
It was 100 and something odd thousand there.
$100,655 per person. That puts us almost dead average in the state of North Carolina. And that's before the reevaluation. All right. Now, I hope I've teased you enough to please come and look. Living wage, excellent. Pull it out, man.
I think so.
Yeah, pull it out.
Well, we're remarkably among the highest in the county, or in the state, on living wage. Matter of fact, we're in the upper tier of it at $11.78, which is the same as Buncombe and Henderson.
And the same as Mecklenburg and Lake and Guilford. That page is this green page, and the dark greens are what Matt's talking about. I would truly encourage, I could spend an hour on this book, and probably Forrest could too, folks, go look at it. It helps us identify our challenges and the things that are going well, and we work from the challenges to help improve the things we need to improve. Okay?
North, does the public have access to this online?
It should have, yes. Go to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. That's www.ncac.org. And if you have any question, I'm sure Mandy have it available. And we have a hard copy at the office. This is the hard copy, so if anybody wants to come by. I have ordered a few more. We'll have to probably limit the handout, but it should be live on the website.
Excellent.
Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, my pleasure. My pleasure. All right. Forrest?
Just a couple of things, a couple of things in my section, and then I'm going to cover a couple of other people's sections. So first of all, just in my manager's report, as we got, last Tuesday, we got word from Department of Revenue, how much sales tax money we got that was from sales that occurred in June. So we actually won't see that money come in until later this month, if not first of October, but we know what it's going to be. They always send you that a month out before it gets processed and comes to you. So once all that came in and looking at all our expenses, some potential fluctuation of a small amount, but we finished the year with a $273,000 gain in the general fund, which is a good place to be. It's a small amount of money, kind of a $25 million budget, but it is good to be finishing it positive. On the one hand, we want to be a little bit further ahead than that. On the other hand, it shows good management by all our department heads and everyone else because it means we get a pretty good job forecasting and adjusting as we went throughout the year, because we were significantly under on expenses. Sales tax revenue came in a little bit over than expected. That is largely because the state has figured out how to collect from online
Yes.
Sales. So that has helped everyone. We're seeing that all over. Plus, economic conditions have been improving, continuing to improve. So all of that is good news. That will impact fund balance slightly and impact any of the things you all want to do, which we'll be discussing at an upcoming work session. Next, I have, on behalf of Lori Ray, who could not be with us tonight, the annual settlement for 2018 property taxes. This is for your review. This is required every year. It's presented by our tax collector, showing the amount of outstanding levy as of June 30th. This does not mean that money will not continue to be collected. It's just her coming to you and saying, this is where we finish the year out. So we have outstanding levy of $520,000, total collected of $9,971,598. That's 95.04% collected. And if you look on one of your first sample pages, it shows some of the, if you go back a few years, that hits 98, 99. So you keep collecting money as you go from there, but this is to inform you of where that is. That's her annual settlement report. And if you have any questions, I can answer on that. And it would need your approval to accept the annual settlement report and authorize the Chairman to signature a sworn statement from the tax collector. It's enclosed.
All right. Do we have any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to approve the tax settlement report?
Motion.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Second? Without further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Next, you have a list of insolvents from the same year. That is personal property, not real estate, that's uncollectible, as did by the tax collector. Those things go back to 2003 or farther. Things we're just not going to get any money on, and it's basically writing, declaring those insolvent. Once you approve that, then she would issue releases on all of those. And that list is in your package as well, the approval for that.
True.
It totals $21,000, $22,000.
Okay. The Chair will move, without further discussion, that we approve the insolvants as presented. Any discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Next, you have the order of collection for your 2019 taxes. This is the official resolution from the Board of Commissioners authorizing the tax collector to go in, collect taxes for 2019. See that attached.
Yes.
I powers heard it before.
All right. Do we have any questions, gentlemen?
Make the motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the order of collection, please raise your right hand.
Next, you have a couple of board appointments. You have two, three-year positions on Economic Development Board. You had three applications. One of those withdrew. The first one on your list withdrew.
Do we have any discussion? Forrest, would it be appropriate possibly for us to, with the agreement of the board, to... Do these have to be filled out, or could these take a little further consideration?
Take it away.
All right. Do we have either a motion or consent of the board to defer?
Mr. Chair, I move, I'm sorry. No, I move that we appoint Ryan Cody to the Economic Development Board.
If we're ready to proceed. Okay, we have a motion to appoint Ryan Cody?
I'll second that.
We have a second? Okay?
Sure.
Any further discussion with Ryan Cody? All those in favor of appointing Ryan Cody, please raise your right hand. Okay?
Mr. Chair, I move that we table the second position and address it further at our work session.
We have a motion to table the second position for the review. We have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling the second position, all, please raise your right hand. Okay, we're good.
Next, you have a couple of reappointments for Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Those are three-year terms. You have five positions. Four of them are eligible for reappointment. One of them is a good board member, but no longer lives in the county, would still participate through her official capacity with the Health Department. That's Dana Stevens, so she'll still be in the room, very much part of that, but could not be reappointed. We do not have an application for that spot, and it's okay for it to wait until we get somebody.
What is the pleasure of the board, man?
I'm not making a motion to approve the ones that could be reappointed, the four that are there.
Okay.
Sure, do we need to state those names for the record?
Sure.
Yeah. Would you state those, please, Craig?
Sure. Robert Chambers, Sharon Cupstead, Courtney Brown, and Dennis Coles.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
You have one more? Do you want to wait and do that one tonight?
Wait on that.
Okay.
Tom, I want this moved outside the camera.
No, I think we're referring to the next.
Yeah, well, on the Parks and Rec, I would move that we table that final position on that till we have opportunity to discuss it as a group.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table that final one. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay?
If you have one position on your planning board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we table that position at this time as well.
The Chair will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay? I believe we have one more, maybe, Forrest?
You have one more, Senior Tar Heel Legislature, which you have, you have a delegate and alternate. Jan Lounsbury has been the delegate for the last year or two. She has resigned. Sherry Perry has been the alternate. And you have two applications. You need to appoint a delegate and an alternate. I think both are willing to be considered for probably either role. I've spoken personally.
The Chair will move that since Sherry has the experience, if she would be the delegate and O'Neal, who would be new, O'Neal Shelton, as the alternate.
I'll second that.
And we have a second? Any further discussion?
That makes perfect sense.
All right. All those in favor of Sherry Perry as delegate and O'Neal Shelton as alternate to the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature, please raise your right hand. Okay?
Next, you have Budget Remit 2. This adjusts current year budget based on increased sales tax revenues after single came in for last year. That increases projections for this year as well. Also, the year-end numbers on vehicle tax came in higher and expected to come up higher this year as well. So there's an increase there. Some adjustments at the Health Department based on some grants, so both revenues and expenses, some changes there. Some changes in the Sheriff's Office, three expense lines to fix a budget error on my part, fix those to where I said they would go, but then forgot to transfer it over when I put it in the main spreadsheet. That totaled $18,000 based on previous actual expenses. And then adjustment for housing inmates. It's going to be probably a little bit longer before we get juveniles, but we're expecting it not to be as long as November 1st. We're expecting it to be a little bit later. That is fine with the other revenues we've had come in. The Sheriff has some other inmate revenues coming in and a little more than that in the counties that we just found out about today. We're okay. There's no reason to panic. It goes, you know, past December, we will, but I feel good about where we are in the state, and with the Sheriff, we're in good shape. The rest is adjustment to lap salaries, where we've had some vacant positions. We're removing that money from those salary lines in those departments. We're fixing another budget error in the register of deeds supplemental pension that was off by a line and ended up not getting put in at the correct amount. So that totals $5,000, needs to be changed. An increase to grant matching based on the increased economic development sales tax. And then the next section is a reduction in workers' comp costs for every department. It was a reduction in every department. The only reason the Sheriff is increasing is that we'd already moved his money a few weeks ago, but we moved $310 too much, so we're fixing that back. So every department... So every department, uh, solid savings in workers' comp. So that total allows $75,000 additional dollars to go toward capital outlay and $59,856 to go towards contingent supply.
Any questions, gentlemen? Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment two?
Make that motion, Chair.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Further discussion? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Forrest.
Next, you have tax releases and refunds for the month of August, July, and August.
Are there any questions, gentlemen? If being none, the chair will move that we approve the releases and refunds as requested by county management and tax office. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second? Any further discussion? If, if none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
And finally, you have your August financial report. We are 16.6% of the way through the year. And so far, for the, um, general fund, our expenditures are at 4.73%. Expenditures are at 10.8%. Uh, landfill revenues are at 3.2%, expenditures are at 14.4%. We're about where we expect to be because we don't collect much until bills are shut out. We really won't collect a lot of our taxes until the winter.
Right.
So we're, we're okay with everything, actually probably, we're in good shape.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Straight forward.
Do we have a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
So moved and a second? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
I think that's all handled.
All right.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board? Being none, and no other business to come before this board, the chair will move that we adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.